Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, January 5th, 2022. This meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast live by East Hampton Media and Chatter Channel 193, and live streaming on their YouTube channel. All council and participants in this meeting are gathering remotely of the executive order by Governor Baker extended to April 2022, which allowed us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and of the public to remain unmute until recognized by the president. Also, for members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meetings unless you are participating in public speak. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara.
Connie Denham? Okay. Salem Derby?
Present.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kaczynski? Tom Peak?
Here.
Brad Riley?
Here.
Dan Rist?
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Here.
Owen Zerret?
Present.
Please stand there for the plea of the legions. Plead of the legions.
To the flag.
United States of America.
The Republic of Georgia stands, one nation, under the goddess. And justice for all.
We don't have any minutes to approve, so we have public speak time. Is anyone from the public there want to say something to the, um, to the council? Julie?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. And thank you, Council President Gomez. I have the nice ring to it. Um, thank you for allowing me to take a moment to speak. And first, I just wanted to say congratulations to all of you for your reelection and the newly elected city councillors. Um, I just wanted to take a brief moment to discuss the city council meeting from December 15th, if I may, in which the city council approved the mayor's appointment, specifically that of the approval for the reappointment of Eric Cohen to the Parks Commission. Uh, at that meeting, Council Zerret had stated a valid concern in regards to his reappointment, and the reasoning was due to some derogatory and devamatory comments made by Eric Cohen on a public social media site directed at Council Zerret and the EPD. I won't repeat those comments, as I know you guys are already fully aware of what they were and if not necessary. Um, I just believe that those comments by Eric Cohen go against the values and standards of conduct that we make, we stand and expect of a city employee, whether paid or volunteer. The majority of the members of the council did not feel this warranted a vote of no and moved forward with his reappointment. Um, many councils expressed two main reasons for approving his appointment. First was freedom of speech. Now, to me, this has nothing to do with freedom of speech. This has to do with conduct and becoming of an appointee who represents our city. There's a difference between voicing critical political views or views in private vice that of attacking someone with comments with malicious intent because Eric Cohen knowingly posted this on a social media site specific to the community of East Hampton. The second reason others voted yes was due to his job performance and endorsement from his supervisor. My concern would be, should we put job performance above unethical conduct? With these two reasons in mind, I just want to pose this scenario to those who voted yes to the reappointment of Eric Cohen. Have these comments towards the EPD and Council Zerret been directed at Mayor LaChapelle? Would your response and vote be the same? Now, I, I understand you cannot answer me, but this is just something to ponder. From the mayor on down to the poll appointees, it really is a privilege and not a right to serve our community. And I really believe that you're held to a higher standard of conduct. The city's council acceptance of, in the willingness to move forward with this reappointment, sent a message, and that would, it would be okay to be bullish, insulting and attack others. I believe this behavior reflects upon all of these standards because abusive conduct, personal charges, or verbal attacks of the character or motives of a member of council, boards, commission, staff, or the public should not be acceptable. So in closing, I just want to say that there has been a powerful divisiveness in our community. I feel this decision was a continual device. As I listened to the city council reorganization meeting on January 2nd, I am so hopeful for the future. It was clear the need and desire to work all together in a professional, unbiased, impartial, and respectful team. Please don't miss this opportunity to achieve this. This is our time to show the community, especially our children and surrounding communities, how to rise above and set examples for others to follow. So thank you for letting me speak. And again, congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Uh, before continuing in a public speak time, I just want to remind everybody from the public that please keep your comments to the, to the council, uh, directed to the council. Thank you. Shelby?
Hi, um, I just wanted to take this opportunity, um, also following up on the December city council meeting. Um, I just don't think it's a good idea to, for the city council or any local government to involve themselves with, um, controlling how people express themselves or trying to regulate how people in the public conduct themselves outside of their, um, government positions. Uh, additionally, context always needs to be taken into consideration. Uh, and I'm kind of, um, shocked too that there's been no discussion, um, there's been a lot of discussion about behavior and the behavior of residents. But when we look at the context of one of the issues that keeps being discussed, one of the things that isn't being addressed is that these comments were directed, um, you know, that there was a reference to rape culture that started a conflict in the community. And then we've not discussed the larger issue of like the prevalence of rape culture, but instead we've really discussed the position of one committee member. Um, so I just kind of wanted to say that and, um, say that again, context is important. And also, I don't think the government has any business and shouldn't start a habit going forward of, you know, digging through people's personal lives or individual lives unless it's posing like a threat or a harm to someone else or another community member. Thanks.
Thank you, Shelby. Anyone from, anyone else from the public? Seeing none? Let's move on. Uh, communication from elected official boards and committees? Any, anyone from the elected officials, boards, any committees have anything tonight? Councilor Zerret?
You can always depend on me, President Gomez. Uh, just quickly, um, it occurred to me that tomorrow will be one year removed from, um, the events at the United States Capitol, uh, which we memorialized here in city council with a resolution against those actions. Uh, certainly, um, I know in our hearts and minds, we obviously reaffirm everything we said in that resolution. Um, even on the, the municipal local level, it's important to us to protect the fabric of democracy, which was certainly deeply challenged that day. And not to mention the significant overtones of white supremacy and, um, uh, racism and antisemitism that, that took place in the symbols portrayed and the actions portrayed on that day. Um, I've been deeply disturbed watching the Northampton, um, discussions around, um, vaccination cards and, uh, with the health department to see so many messages and overtones and blatant, um, messages of antisemitism wrapped up into that discussion. Um, it makes me certainly very uncomfortable. Um, and it makes me realize that what we saw last January 6th is certainly not gone from our society. In fact, members that participated in those riots have been elected to elected positions in our country. So we got to all stay vigilant. It's our duty from the municipal level and up to safeguard the, um, the real values of democracy and certainly continue to try to protect our community against, um, white supremacy, racism, and antisemitism. So that's all.
I'm going to, Councilor Zerret. Anyone else? All right, move to the correspondence announcement of President Vice President Communication. Presidential committees announcements. I'm going to make the announcement now so that the public will know, um, who is going to be in each committee. Uh, and appointments, Councilor Riley, Councilor Rothschild, and Councilor Gomez. Property, Councilor Kaczynski, Councilor Zerret, and Councilor Gomez. Rules, Councilor Rist, Councilor Kaczynski, and Councilor Denham. Police safety, Councilor Zerret, Councilor Derby, and Councilor Riley. Ordinance, Councilor Derby, Councilor Peak, and Councilor Rothschild. Finance, Councilor Rist, Councilor Peak, and Councilor Denham. That is, um, that is the committees and the member of the committees and, uh, the committee's organization schedule. They, we already have a few of them. Uh, we had an appointment where they, uh, select, uh, Councilor Rothschild as, um, the chairwoman and Councilor Riley as the clerk. Public safety, uh, ready to, uh, Councilor Zerret as, um, the chairperson and Councilor Riley as the, the clerk. And finance, uh, Councilor Rist is the chairperson and Councilor Peak is the clerk. Um, property is going to have a meeting Monday, uh, 6:00 PM, uh, for reorganization. Um, ordinance, um, I don't know when they're going to have it, but, uh, Councilor, um, Derby is going to make the announcement soon. And, um, rules, um, I'm expecting to get that, uh, from one of the councilors in the committee soon. Um, that's the committees. Um, and I hope we start working with, with, um, in, in a new term. Um, before moving to the resolution, today will begin a new chapter in this city council. I thank you for the trust in me and voting in favor of my nomination as a president. Sports, households, schools, and many more institutions have rules, and we are no exception. In my professional career, I like to follow the rules. I also hear, also here, we have rules, and that is why I ask everyone to follow them. I will be flexible and fair, so that we'll be, we all participate in this democratic process that the East Hampton citizens give us. I surely make some mistakes, but I will learn from them to be a better president. I will see that everyone participated fairly in this meeting, so leave me, that work to me. I will be aware of everything and everyone, so that we can have our organized meeting that our constituents understand. Uh, thank you. Uh, being saying that, we have a resolution. Uh, the, um, that we always do that every, when we start, when we start a term, and I'm going to read it. Um, the resolution is, East Hampton City Council Resolution Pertains Discrimination and Intolerance. Whereas asked, one of the fundamental cause value of the city of East Hampton in fear of person with respect and dignity, and whereas the city of East Hampton values all its citizens and recognize that the many ethnicities have contributed to the strength of character of the city, citizen of East Hampton, and whereas the city of East Hampton recognize the strength in diversity and inclusiveness in the citizens, and now therefore be it heard by resolve that the city of East Hampton and its representative should not condone or tolerate any form of discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, creed, age, familiar status, national, national origin, immigration status, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity expressions, physical or mental disability, or veteran status.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion? Councilor? Councilor Denham?
Yeah, I just, I'm new to this, so I apologize. I'm not sure. I have a couple of suggestions for improvement to this actually, and there's actually, you left out class and you left, and sexes left out of this. And so I think that those are important if we're thinking about, um, affordability within this community and whatnot. So, um, but I'm not sure if that's now to propose that or?
Yes, you can, you can make an, uh, motion to amend it.
Yeah, so I would like to, um, make an amendment to that. Um, also, the second paragraph, I think, is a bit problematic in that, um, I suggest adding races and ethnicity, um, of its citizens, but also the order of the sentence, uh, makes it sound like ethnicities contribute to the larger population, but not included in that larger population. And so just the framing of that, I think, is also a bit challenging. So, um, so I don't know how to, do you want me to?
Councilor Peak?
Read it? Yeah.
Just one way, Councilor Peak?
Um, I know it's our, um, tradition to always affirm this, you know, at the start of our, our meeting, but if there is a thought that maybe we should workshop this a little bit, then do you think it might be a good idea to send it back to rules and, and, and just sort of, uh, take a look at it there rather than have all eight of us sort of talking over each other, trying to figure it out?
That is a great suggestion, Councilor Peak. Let's move it to, um, I will remove the motion. Who was the, we'll make it the second.
I made, I made the second, so I'll go ahead and remove my second.
So, uh, I will take a motion to move it to the, to the rules.
Looks like we still have a couple hands up.
No, I'll just make the motion. I was just saying to move it to rules.
Councilor, uh, Councilor Rist?
Uh, since Councilor Denham and myself are on rules, I would suggest to Councilor Denham, why don't you come up with trapped language to add to this?
She did.
So that it can be submitted, and I would suggest that you send that to all the councilors. And as the only continuing member for rules, I will try to set up a rules meeting, uh, with yourself and myself and JP for early next week, so that this can be brought forward at the next meeting. And with that, uh, Lindsay, go ahead and make your motion. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to?
Excuse me. One second. I'm, I'm the president. I just want to let you know that I recognize people. Um, Lindsay, you want to make the motion?
Yes, thank you, Counselor. Um, President Gomez, no, I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion to move this, um, resolution to rules for revision.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the discussion. Seeing none? Barbara?
Connie Denham? Hi. Salem Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Brad Riley?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Um, Mayor's Communication. Madam Mayor?
Good evening. Thank you, um, President, uh, Gomez. Uh, just congratulations to those who are at their first city council meeting as a sworn counselor. Um, I look forward to working with you and, and those who have reelected. I know we're just going to continue the good work. Um, I would ask folks only to keep a close eye on our dashboard, uh, for COVID-19. Uh, we're really up against the numbers. Um, it's hard to make sense of these big numbers going up and down. But, um, I know, I know how severe COVID-19 is when I walk through City Hall, and only half of us are here because of staggered shifts. And we have people on top of that out because daycares have been compromised with infection. I know it must be the same everywhere. So I, I asked the public, um, to keep a high quality of mask on, um, booster test. I, it seems like, um, just a, a crazy swirl wheel, but, but that's what we have to do. And unfortunately, um, we put ourselves in the place we are now. So we can, we got three more weeks. Let's, let's flatten the surge like our epidemiologist says. Otherwise, again, uh, looking forward to working with, with everyone in the new committees, uh, and stay safe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any councilor have any questions for the mayor? Seeing none? Uh, let's move to the new business. Before, keep going to new business, I passed the gavel to, uh, the Vice President to move some new business to the committees. Um, from now on, what we're going to do is we're going to keep the agenda that with it is. We probably want to move a few things. With the new business, we're going to do at the end, instead of having the, uh, the chairperson of moving stuff in the middle of the report, we're going to do as the agenda indicate, and the agenda indicate is going to be at the end of the, of the, of the meeting. Um, so, uh, being saying that, uh, Councilor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. And, um, the way that I'm going to proceed with this tonight is I will move the pieces of new business to committee, um, other than the pieces that need a first reading, which I will have the Chair of Finance, um, move to committee if that is agreeable to the president. Um, and, and so the first piece is going to go to finance, but it doesn't require first reading. So request to establish a donation account. And I believe we did talk about this, that this is something that we generally is actionable. So I, actually, I don't think we need to move this to, to finance. I think we can just vote on this tonight. So let's, uh, I'll catch myself before I make my first mistake. So, um, we have a request to establish a donation account for the Health and Youth Coalition, and this is something that we generally will move on in, and when it first comes to agenda, we don't necessarily send it to finance. Um, and so if it's agreeable, um, I would make a motion to establish a donation account, uh, for the Health and Youth Coalition.
Second.
And Barbara, do you want me to read the?
Yeah, could you read it? Just, just read it right off the paper? Great, thank you.
Yep, no problem. Uh, so I move to establish, uh, an East Hampton Health and Youth Coalition Do- Donation Account pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Uh, approval is hereby given to establish account for the purpose of receiving funds designated for the East Hampton Health and Youth Coalition.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to request to establish a donation account for the Healthy Youth Coalition. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Brad Riley?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Motion passes. Uh, Councilor Derby?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Um, uh, we also have a request, uh, for a city ordinance amendment, uh, to amend Chapter 7, Section 7-18, Pay Plan Exhibit B, which historically goes to finance. So I would move that that be sent to finance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the discussion. Seeing none? Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
Uh, Tom Peak?
Hi.
Brad Riley?
Hi.
Dan Rist? I see him talking.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And at this point, I'm going to turn this over to the Chair of Finance, Councilor Rist.
If it's all right with Mr. President, I will read both supplemental, that both, uh, request supplemental request and then send them to finance and set public hearings.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
First is a supplemental appropriation from the Community Preservation Act. Request is here, I move that the city council sent, wait, I'm sorry. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation, forty-two thousand five hundred dollars to be appropriated from the CPA Undesignated Fund, forty-two thousand five hundred dollars to be appropriated to the Skate Park Design Account, forty-two thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of creating conceptual designs, construction cost estimates, and hold five community meetings at various stages of the process for a new skate park at thirty-two dash fifty Pace and Avenue. The next supplemental is a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is one hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents to be transferred from the cannabis account, one forty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents to be transferred to fiscal year twenty-two Community Compact IT Grant Account, one hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. The amount requested will be used to supplement the cost of deploying a state-of-art public safety suite, including data conversion and migration, licenses and support. Central Square Pro is the number one public safety software. CS Pro integrates data across the system from nine-one-one to CAD to mobile to records to jail to administrative tasks. Critical information flows easily, no need for switching. It is powerful yet easy to use, one application, one system, one database, and one password. The analytics module provides powerful reporting tools, mapping-based analysis, AI in Michigan, and machine learning for proactive insights, charts and graphs for intelligent policing. With more automation and better use of data, the public is being informed, is better informed, and the agency better equipped to accomplish its mission. Through its portal or dispatch, police, fire, EMS services will be more accessible, approachable, and outwardly responsive. I move that these two items be set to finance and also be set for public hearing for January nineteenth at six fifteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from two, uh, different appropriations. One is for forty-two hundred, uh, for forty-two thousand five hundred to pay a design, a cost estimate, and hold meetings for a new skate park. And, uh, the second one is appropriation for cannabis, one hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars with twenty-nine cents to supplement grant funding for police safety IT computer upgrade. The, uh, send it to the finance committee. Barbara?
Uh, Tom Peak?
Hi.
Brad Riley?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
Councilor Rist?
Just wanted to confirm that I also set public hearings.
Yes, I just missed that part, but, but you did. Sorry.
All right, thank you.
Dan?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, could, if you could, um, the ordinance amendment, which really should have gone to the council last month, could you set a public hearing for that too?
Mr. President?
It, it connects with the money that was approved, um, in December fifteenth.
Sure.
Would you like me to do that, Mr.?
I would love you to.
You do it.
Mr. President?
Yes, yes, you can do that.
I move that we set a public hearing for the amendment to the city ordinance, um, Chapter 7, Section 7-18, Pay Plan Exhibit B for January nineteenth at six fifteen.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the public hearing. Barbara?
Brad Riley?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Motion passes. Councilor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the next item we have is, uh, a group of mayoral appointments. So I would like to move pursuant to the East Hampton Home Rule Charter, Section 3.3, the following positions are hereby recommended for, um, appointment approval. And we have Crystal Coat Stoes, um, for the COA, uh, term expiration twelve thirty-one twenty-two-three. Timothy Garcia, uh, for the ZBA Associate Member, uh, term expiration twelve thirty-one twenty-two-three. Uh, and Elodie Chicoen, Agricultural Commission for reappointment with a term expiration of twelve thirty-one twenty-two-four. Uh, James Ramsey, uh, for the Registrar of Voters, reappointment twelve thirty-one twenty-two-four. And Charles Duffy for the Veterans Council, also a reappointment with a term expiration of twelve thirty-one twenty-two-four in the form of a motion.
We have a second. We have a, uh, motion and a second to move new, uh, appointments and three reappointments to the appointments committee. Barbara?
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Yeah.
Hi. Salem Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
Tom Peak? Tom Peak. Brad Riley.
Aye.
Motion passes. Consular Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the last, uh, piece of new business is an order, uh, of taking for the Union Street, uh, Tip Project, which, uh, I would like to move to property in the form of a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion? You know, Barbara?
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Motion passes. Look like we do. Barbara?
I remember that, that Jeff was talking about this at the last meeting and he had kind of requested, I, it doesn't need to be advertised, but he was talking about wanting a public hearing to not hold things up. Um, Owen, do you know anything?
To do a public hearing about the Union Street?
Right. In, in his paperwork at the last meeting, he had asked about January nineteenth. I, I just wanted to remind you about that.
I think we, that we didn't schedule that yet?
No, no, because you didn't have it yet.
Okay, um, anyone want to make a motion to have a public hearing that day?
I'll, I'll move to, um, make a, set a public hearing for the order of taking, uh, for Union Street Tip Project for January nineteenth at six fifteen in these chambers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the public hearing. Um, any further discussion? Barbara?
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Motion passes. Look like we did everything what is in our agenda. So I would take, uh, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, uh, to adjourn. Barbara?
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez. Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Motion passes. Everybody have a great night.
Awesome. Thank you. Nice job, Omar.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Great meeting.
Take care, guys.